It's gonna be late. We had a customer walk in.
Teresa is here.
Oh, yeah, this is Teresa.
It's good.
I can read that every year and it's never gonna stick. I mean, and that's just, that's just scratching the surface with Karen. Let's explain it to me a few days ago. Uh, there's his. Well, um, good morning, everyone. Uh, thank you for being here this morning. I hereby call to order the City of Hartsville, South Carolina Work Section of Tuesday, October first, two thousand twenty-four, uh, to order. Um, we do have a lot on the agenda today. Um, good stuff to hear about, but because y'all know how important lunch is to me, so I'd still like to get it wrapped up around noon and in that, uh, in, 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 in making that happen, I'll go ahead and ask Councilman Mack if you would lead us an indication. We will follow that by the Pledge of Legions and the Civility Pledge. I would invite you all to stand and pray in your faith as we pray in ours.
Let us pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, thou art God and God alone. Father, we come today in these hallowed halls, real life, that is, in you that we live and move and have our being. Father, we thank you for being able to assemble. Lord, we come to do the business of the city of Hartsville today. But before we get into that business, we want to thank you for sparing us from the storm. We had minimal damage, but Father, we pray that you would meet every need of those affected, those that lost loved ones, that lost their homes and businesses. Give them what they need. Provide for them as you are the great provider. Now, Lord, we pray for all of our first responders, our police officers, our council, our staff, and our residents. Keep us in your care. Keep the hedge protection around Hartsville, Darlington County, the state of hearts, the state of South Carolina, our nation, and our world. We ask these things in the name of Jesus. We do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting other's viewpoints, and finding solutions for every member of my city. All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, and Mr. Manager, that brings us to you. You'll kick us off. I know we've got, uh, one of these agenda items has been moved, so, uh, let's get to it.
Item F is not going to be on today's agenda. We will have it potentially at a later date. Um, but I do have several items to talk about today. Uh, we have several presentations we'd like to go over and also some updates for you. But first, I'm gonna go ahead and invite Conley Development, uh, Field and Kevin. Uh, this is a development. They approached us about a potential development on one of the city-owned properties. Uh, and they like to kind of talk about what they, where they're coming from and what they do. So Kevin, if you guys will take it away.
Very good. Welcome.
Mayor and Council, thank you all for your time today. I really appreciate it. Um, like Daniel said, my name is Field Gillett. This is Kevin Conley. Um, Kevin's actually my father-in-law and, um, so I came and worked for the family company. But, um, wanted to give you guys a little bit of backstory on our company and what we do. So as you can see, we have two companies, Conley Builders and Conley Development. Conley Development, uh, goes out and obtains property and obtains financing. And we kind of pass it down the hall and our construction company, uh, builds our developments. Um, so the Conley family of companies, we build, uh, quality, affordable housing. Um, we build across, uh, South Carolina and North Carolina. We have a extremely experienced staff with over a hundred years of combined experiment or experience. Kevin started this company back in nineteen ninety-seven and he's, uh, built over fifty apartment complexes, um, ru- roughly worth about four hundred and ten million dollars in development costs. Um, and Kevin's been extremely successful in this business. He's been the most awarded developer in South Carolina for the last fifteen years. Um, so yeah, if we're pursuing a piece of property, it means that we, uh, have all the hopes and intentions of, uh, obtaining the financing and seeing this development go through. And we hire a third-party management company to manage all of our properties. Um, Kevin will own them for upwards of twenty years, so it's not like a, a build and sell. He, um, owns them. They're part of this reputation and so we like to keep the properties, uh, in tip-top shape, uh, throughout the life of them. And Kevin was the first developer in South Carolina to put camera systems on his apartment complexes. Um, and we give the local authorities access and we'll work with the police chiefs and, um, anybody else in the city that needs access to those cameras because, um, it's inevitable that something will happen and, uh, we just have the, we can, uh, have the right technology to help keep everybody safe. Um, so I want to get through some examples of what Kevin has done over the years. Um, this was Cotton Mill Village in Rock Hill, South Carolina. Kevin used a combination of, um, state tax credits for affordable housing, um, abandoned building and textile credits to transform this property into, um, the image on the right. And I'm sure he could go into a bunch of details about this building, but, um, it's pretty amazing the transformation that's happened. Here's a few other pictures. Um, and what's not pictured here is behind this, um, mill, there are a lot of single-family homes that are, uh, still for rent. So Kevin kind of drove a wedge in a, um, bad neighborhood in Rock Hill, a dilapidated neighborhood, and, um, really turned that city block around and, uh, there's, it's improved a lot. It's just a few other pictures of the interior of Cotton Mill. Um, this is Autumnwood Crossing. This is in Lexington, right around the corner from our office. This is a senior facility. So it's age restricted to fifty-five and older. Um, this is just kind of another example of one of our different products. But, um, these, the senior facilities are typically one large building and, um, this one is newer, so you can see it's got kind of some updated architectural styles to it. Then this is Beechwood Place in Concord, North Carolina. This is a, a family development. So this is, um, no, no age restriction, but it is still income restricted. And then this is, uh, in Rock Hill. This is Catalba Crossing. Again, this is another elderly facility, so the age restricted. And that's Seerwood up in Charlotte. Um, that one's, that one's a family. And then this is a development that's currently under construction. This is Midtown at Bull Street. This is in the Bull Street District of downtown Columbia, um, right off of Third Baseline. So we've got the big apartment building and this is actually a family development. There's seventy-two units in the big building and then there's townhomes, um, in the back and there's eighteen townhome units. This is Indigo Towns. This is down in Florence, um, kind of right on the corner of, uh, Irving and Coit Street. This one just finished up construction and is, uh, currently being leased up. Um, and we have one right adjacent to this property as well. It's called Indigo Point and it's a senior facility. So it's, I think, what year was Indigo Point built, Kevin? Like, two thousand fifteen?
Two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
It's about ten years old. So, uh, I don't have any pictures of it here, but, um, I welcome anybody to come and ride by and, you know, maybe meet some of the residents. Um, but you can see that Florence is a great example of, uh, older property that you can see how well we, um, upkeep and maintain our properties and, and a brand-new one that's, you know, got all the upgraded features and kind of with today's, um, styling. And then this brings us to the proposed development that we have here today. Um, I talked with Daniel and we kind of went back and forth on what might be a good fit on this property and we felt that, given the single-family nature, um, of this neighborhood, that the townhome style would be, uh, more well-received, uh, kind of would blend into the single-family nature. Um, this is proposing fifty-eight units. Um, I think there's roughly thirteen buildings. And these would be two-story townhouse buildings, so very, very similar to Indigo Towns, um, that you saw the picture of. But we are more than open to work with the city on elevations and kind of what you would like this building to look like to make sure that they fit in with the nature. Um, and as you can see, we have, we're proposing two entrances. Unfortunately, our architect is up in Greenville and they got hit pretty bad in the storm. Um, but the only thing I'm not crazy about on this site plan is it looks like the main entrance is coming off of Marion with the office building. It's kind of personal preference. We can go either way with, uh, making the entrance off of Eighth Street and, you know, kind of flipping the office over to that side and making that seem like the main entrance. But, um, we'll be happy to work with the city on, um, improvements in and around this, uh, property since we'll be accessing off of both streets. Um, and the cemetery parking up in the top left corner. We know that the cemetery has been a priority for the city lately. Um, so we'd love to work with you guys on what you'd like to see there. But, um, the, the cemetery parking, it looks like it's, it's kind of shifted away from the cemetery property right now. So we were kind of proposing maybe to shift it down a little closer to the cemetery itself and, um, hopefully get to redo that parking area for the cemetery. Um, but overall, I think this, this site plan would, would fit in well with the adjacent properties and, um, the two-story buildings would, would fit in well with residential nature. So some details about this development. Um, the total development cost would be about sixteen and a half million dollars. And it would consist of thirty-eight two-bedroom units, which, um, these square feet footages are in approximation right now. We have to work through all the details with our architect. Um, but it looks like the two bedrooms are going to be about eleven hundred and, uh, eleven hundred square feet and the three-bedroom units will be close to that fourteen hundred square foot mark. The rents are going to range from a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month to nine hundred and twenty dollars a month with the tenants paying utilities separately from that. Now, estimated annual property tax revenue, since this property would be affordable housing, is, uh, taxed off of the, um, income that the property produces. So, uh, property tax revenue is estimated at around fifty-five thousand dollars a year to the city. And then we will be serving the twenty percent, fifty percent, sixty percent, and seventy percent of the area median income. So if the area median income is fifty thousand dollars for Hartsville, um, if someone that would qualify for a fifty percent unit is someone that makes twenty-five thousand dollars or less. Um, and the, the range in the rents is tiered based off of their income. So the whole goal of this program is you have to be working, you have to have an income, but the goal is to not spend more than thirty percent of your income on household living. So that way you can go out and still have money for food, gas, groceries, and all the necessities of life. So we went and pulled, uh, a little bit of, uh, statistic data from, for the city of Hartsville. Unfortunately, these numbers are pulling from Florence, South Carolina, so, um, yes, the MSA looking stuff here. And so some qualifying wages that would, um, qualify to live here would be waiters and waitresses, childcare workers, fast food cooks, uh, janitors, um, EMS, firefighters, um, maybe some police and, um, you know, some mechanics and some school workers. But on the far right side, you can see the, the complicated portion of this property and why we have to have a third-party management company. But, um, typically, you can see the, the unit counts at the bottom and the bedroom counts. So we'll have three two-bedroom, twenty percent units, and three three-bedroom, twenty percent units. And you can kind of see that going down the list. Um, so in a two-bedroom unit, that, you know, means that approximately four people can live there. It doesn't mean that they have to. Um, in a three-bedroom, the max that could live there would be six people. So you can kind of see the tier of income based off of how many people live there, um, kind of what the, the max in their income is. And the twenty percent units, those are, um, those are hard to find people with that low of an income. We partner with the South Carolina Department of Mental Health in Columbia and, um, the lady's name is Michelle Murph and we work with her and she reaches out to the local, um, mental health departments and, um, tries to help find us tenants that, um, maybe have some disabilities or, um, you know, something that prevents them from, uh, working a full-time job. And so she kind of helps fill, um, will help fill those, those six units at the twenty percent mark. And I think that is it. So we're open for any questions and discussion. Hopefully I explained this well enough.
Yeah, then your, um, your presentation answered, uh, most if not all the questions I had. Your idea about reconfiguring the layout from Marion to Washington Street. But one of the questions I had when I looked at the site plan was that the dumpster is close to the?
Eighth Street.
Yeah, not Washington, Eight, Eighth Street. And I was like, hmm, I don't know, maybe that should be in the back and the playground be up front. But if you switch that, I don't know what's right. That's just something I was thinking about.
All of this?
Oh, that's flexible, right, yeah. Um, but, uh, Councilman Mack, did you have?
Yes. If you would go to your, um, income page, please, and the units that last paid. Okay. Now, you said it would be hard to find people with that low of an income. It really wouldn't.
Okay.
I kind of had the same thought. I think I could think of a couple months ago.
And they would not be, um, mental he- health people per se.
Okay.
We would have many residents.
They don't have to be. We've, um, just ran across that in some areas.
Yeah, I, I just want to make that clear. So we don't start on that foot. These have to be mental health.
No, ma'am, they do not.
So we want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Um, the second thing is with the site plan, I think it is a perfect, a perfect fit. And what I love about it is in the beginning, you will have all of the technology that you need to prevent crime and violence and you are willing to give that information to the police.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And those people that live there, it's incumbent upon them that they follow these rules.
Absolutely.
If somebody that lives with them breaks that rule, what happens? They all go.
Yes, ma'am. Well, and that's, that's part of our tenant certification with our management company. They run background checks and, um, you basically can't have anything other than a speeding ticket to, to live here, but.
I don't know if I could follow that.
And, and there's certifications every year, inspections from the investors, inspections from state housing. So it's pretty tight on, um, making people follow the rules. It's, it's a privilege to live in one of these complexes.
So what, what has happened? Um, the, the site that was there was called Lincoln Village and it was a low-income, um, housing project. And we have several around the city. But what happens is in those places, crime and illegal activities happen at these sites. And they, in the past, had been harboring these wrongdoers and being allowed to continually stay there. That will not work in Hartsville anymore.
Yes, ma'am.
And I like the fact that you've covered all of the bases that we need covering from the cemetery, um, looking at that and taking that into consideration and the number of units that you have. Everything is upfront. And so I love this plan and I would love for us to go forward with this plan because we really do need housing for low to moderate income people. And it's not going to be hard to fill.
I think it'll fill up immediately. Fill up immediately.
If I could take just two minutes. Steve's done an excellent job. He came in, he asked me, he said, you want to present? I said, look, I've done this a hundred times. I'm a, uh, but he's done a great job. I'm, I'm, as I said, I'm Kevin Conley. I'm second generation. My, my father was involved in, in this industry and, uh, he retired and I took over. And I'm happy that, you know, my daughter, you know, his wife and my son also worked in the company. But, you know, affordable housing's been my life. Um, and I tell people all the time, you know, it's, you know, it, I get to do, it's a different kind of thing. I mean, what I like to do is go into municipalities and figure out what they need. Uh, the pictures and examples you saw in Rock Hill, I wound up going up there, much like we are here today. Talked to them on the front end and, um, they had heard about me and asked me to come and speak to them and said, hey, we've got this old mill in the back. We'd like for you to put senior housing back there. And everybody had a, you know, a kind of stigma against affordable housing and, and family units. They said, we want you to put a senior project in the back in this old mill. So I went up there and I kind of surveyed the area and everything. I figured out, I was like, wow, you know, the crowd's really high, you know, everything. And I said, man, I'm sorry, I can't do that. I said, I will be big victims back here. Uh, I said, but, and they had spent over a hundred thousand dollars on a planner to come in and plan this area. And it was an old mill village, you know, with houses. A lot of the houses were, um, owned by absentee landlords. They were just out of state, picked up on pack sales. It was a mess. Had eight, ten, twelve people living in a three-bedroom house. So, uh, I said, look, I'll tell you what I'll do. I said, I'll work from the outside in, because it was right beside Wentworth College. I said, well, you'll let me not go by your plan, but if you let me start on the outside and drive a wedge in, then I think we can really start making a change. And, um, we did. We, and, and they set up a Tisch District so that every dollar we spent in taxes stayed in that community. When we went in there, crime was really high. The streets were broken up. They had no sign walls to speak of, no, no, you know, not proper lighting. If you drive through there today, so we started in, we built a, 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 a more of a garden-style apartment unit. And as we stepped back in the neighborhood, uh, I'll never forget, one of the residents, you know, original residents that lived in one of the houses, she was very proud and, uh, she was worried about what I was going to do to her neighborhood. And I said, look, I promise I'm going to make it better. And she said, well, we'll see. And she was a skeptic, but we started working our way back into the neighborhood. And we went from garden-style units, then we went to townhomes, then we went to single-family and we did the old, uh, it was the old Rock Hill Body Company. Um, it used to be an ancillary cotton warehouse. And then they used it during, uh, World War Two to build truck bodies for the military and then Pepsi trucks and all kinds of stuff. But that building was in terrible shape, but you could see. We started revitalizing that whole city block for them. And, uh, when we finished, if you drive up there today, all the streets paved, they've got sidewalks on all streets. All the, we worked with the city, all the street lamps match and, uh, crime went down about like forty percent. And, uh, I actually had somebody get mad at me because they came in, nobody wants to live in that neighborhood. And, uh, they had somebody get mad at me. They came in, they saw the single-family house we were building in the back. And they said, we want to buy one. And I said, but you can't buy it. And they thought I was like trying to discriminate. I was like, no, no, you don't understand. If, if they're for rent, they're all under one finance. I said, but, you know, you can, you can serve it for rent. So it really turned that whole neighborhood around. And that's the success stories that I like to tell and that's the things you like to do. I was talking to the police chief here just a minute ago. Um, Saltor, Rock Hill, a lot of police chiefs, you know, municipalities around the area. We cooperate with them on these camera systems. And, um, a lot of folks think, well, if you're putting cameras in and you're worried about, you know, what your residents are doing. It's not, not necessarily that. We want to know what's going on. We want to help law enforcement. I own a property, uh, uh, over in Darlington and the next door to another apartment complex. And they don't take pride like we do in our properties. And, uh, the, um, we, they got a call that someone had, um, robbed the pizza delivery guy. And, um, so they called, hey, can we get access to your cameras and everything else? Come to find out, there was an apartment complex next door. They called in order to our facility. So it looked like the people from our facility robbed it. We caught all that on camera, turned it over. We called, I can't tell you the number of people that we called coming from outside the facility, coming in to pressure our residents to break into their cars and all that. So that's what we like to do. So we like to come in, try and figure out what your needs are here. I'll give everyone, every, my, um, uh, business cards, got my cell phone number on it. Every manager, city, uh, mayor, uh, you know, every municipality I work in, they have my cell phone number. And if I don't answer it, please text me, um, because I get so many, like all of you do, I'm sure, get so many jump calls. But please text me and I will call you right back. Um, because like I said, we want to make sure that we become part of the community and I want to make sure we make it better. And I want to use Hartsville as our next success story. We're talking to non-monetary.
Awesome. We appreciate it. Um, I do want to keep the agenda moving. You might have any other questions for Conleys before we move on? Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate your presentation. Look forward to hearing from you again soon.
Of the presentation?
Yeah, I'm sure Matt and Clark could probably.
We'll send it on to you.
Well, thanks you again, gentlemen. Um, Mr. Manager, uh, let's go right on to item B, please.
All right. Thank you, guys. Um, so we do have another update. This is for, um, KCG, which again, this is another property in the city, uh, not city-owned, uh, over off of Washington Street. They came to you for phase one of a proposal. We did support that with a letter of support, also providing a letter to show what our potential incentives would be. They are moving on. They have not heard back about phase one. They are moving on to phase two. Um, as I said in my email, they are looking at doing, um, another, uh, quite a bit, a large more, larger number of units in this one. I believe it's a hundred and eighty-two units in this second one, or it could be potentially a hundred and two. I didn't get clarification. It was the eighty plus the hundred and two or a hundred and eighty-two new units. But if we so choose, they're going to be coming to us next week for a letter of support. It's a non-monetary commitment again. Um, this time, all they need, because of this particular type of tax credit, is just a letter of support from the city that we would be willing to support it and we're in support of the development, uh, for again workforce housing, uh, sustainable housing, and then also a, uh, summary of what incentives we potentially offer in our strategic investments. Uh, so we will be potentially bringing that to you guys next week to vote on. Um, happy to answer any questions, but that's pretty much it. For waiting for that. Okay?
Any questions? Can we move on?
Quickly, Mayor, clear the water. If number one's not off the ground, how do you go to number two?
So apparently, and, and potentially our tax experts might be able to say it, apparently you can go forward on phase two without phase one being approved, uh, is what she's doing. So, uh, hopefully she will hear back on it. But again, we're still waiting to see. There is still a ranking that you can see of the points. Um, she does fall a little short. I think she had ninety-one awarded points. Uh, so we are waiting, but I believe, according to her, she can go forward on phase two.
So she'll explain that next week.
She will be here to explain it next week.
I had the same question I was going to ask.
And that's a good question for her to answer directly because that's a good one.
Thank you. Well, um, let's, uh, on to, uh, item C from the Community Foundation.
All right. Uh, so this is one, uh, the Community Foundation for Better Hartsville. Um, I am an ex-official on the board. Uh, they are really kind of revamping what they're trying to do and, uh, and coming out. And I've been having some very good conversations. The chair is Martin Digger's, of course, Marty's son. And then they have a slew of people from across the city who are all from various different organizations, different, uh, foundations. And so, uh, the goal of this was I, Councilman Teresa Mack had asked me to kind of give an update on what they're doing, what projects they're working on. I attended their strategic planning session we had on a Saturday. We spent four hours talking about, uh, what the new direction of the Community Foundation is going to be. And so I listed out four different, uh, focus areas that they're working on right now. The major ones are Carolina's for Ukraine. They are the kind of spearhead for this organization that is, uh, taking in Ukrainian refugees from the ongoing war and the conflict going on. I believe we have about twenty-four individuals who have come. Most of them are families. In fact, I believe there's actually one family with three generations who have made their way over to Hartsville. Uh, they are, um, these people are coming over, are highly skilled, um, you know, have to high degrees, uh, and they are trying to find employment. They are on a temporary green card visa program, so they are able to attain work, uh, uh, work here and, uh, pay wages and everything like that. Uh, so that's been highly successful. So that's been highly successful, it's kind of actually becoming its own thing. The Ukrainians are kind of taking care of themselves, but we are still, the Community Foundation is providing that support that they need. It's part of a national program, but they are the spearhead. There's no other organization like it doing in South Carolina, which I think is pretty a testament.
I think maybe even broader than just South Carolina.
I think so, yeah.
They're doing, anyway, yeah.
And they were featured on PBS show that came out, it was, I can't remember the name of the lady, but she did a special on Ukrainians that were coming over, so it's pretty cool. They do also work with Leadership Hartsville with the Chamber. I know that might be changed a little bit later on, but they are the charity organization that Leadership works through. They are doing now, again, through your approval, the Community Garden, that's over on Fourteenth Street. They are the one, they're going to have the year-long lease on that property and then they will serve as that conduit until they can form their own 501(c)(3) for rooted in Hartsville. And the next thing that they're working on is becoming more venture philanthropic ventures, capitalism, that's the best way I can say it. Basically, it's forming a donor advisor fund. And this is all very new to me, but essentially you can develop a donor advice fund which dictates, the donors dictate where the grant monies go towards, potentially for a specific project. Community Foundation for Better Hartsville is considering forming their own DAF is what it's called, DAF, DAF. And they could start to tailor where that money goes in Hartsville. It's very impressive, they are working with a third-party group that can help them navigate the situation. And basically it just allows you to donate money to a charity, but also dictate where that money goes. You can contribute to your own, with your own DAF and have that money pointed to the same as DAF, as Community Foundation for Better Hartsville, or join into the Community Foundation's Hartsville. So they're starting to change how they're doing things, this is all very preliminary, but that's what they're doing now. And so I'm sure they'd be open to answer any questions you have, they're very interested in working with the city as well as with other foundations and the different entities within the city. So I think it's exciting, I think it's something that's a brand-new chapter for them. And I'm sure they, again, they'd be willing to answer any questions you have, if you have any going forward.
Donor advised funds are a cool thing, not just at a local level, like Fidelity offers one, it's a neat tool.
Yeah.
Any questions for the, for Daniel with the foundation? Thank you for the update.
Okay.
Ms. Mack, do you have something?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Daniel, it, it's good that they're doing this, but since we have the major donors, Snuggles, Aaron, the Cochrane Duke, Chris, Chris here, and the private sector, well, they've left out some sectors. I'll just put it like that.
Yeah, and I think every board needs to make sure they're trying to have a cross-section.
Yeah, we, we, we would love to see more diversity.
Sure.
And because it has operated through the city of Hartsville. I've been on council for eleven years come November, and it has operated through the city of Hartsville and it's never known, it's never been known by council, what they did, who they were.
Sure.
Or anything like that. And so with having things happen like that, it, it, it's just not good business. So I'm, I'm glad you're being the ex officio and we can stay updated and maybe get some diversity in there and continue on.
Yes, ma'am, I definitely encourage them to do that.
Continue to build.
Sure, absolutely. And I'll do my part as ex officio to help out in any way I can.
Daniel, I have a question too. So at our last council meeting, we gave them some office space, if I remember correctly as well. What's their long-term goals for where they want to set up shop permanently?
So that's a good question, and a probably better answer by them, but my understanding, so they do have a part-time executive director and they've always had a part-time executive director, that office space has always just sort of served, they worked through the governor's school, the governor's school gave them office space. And so are allowing them to do that, I think the long-term is that they eventually potentially would like to have a space to work out of permanently, but I believe that has to deal with if they have to, you know, hire a full-time executive director, again, secure that nest egg funding we were talking about to can fund their operational costs, because that's really the big deal here is, a donor advised fund can be used for many things, but not necessarily for operational costs for the Community Foundation. So there's certain restrictions on that money they can get. So I think a long, long-term solution is for them to have a space at some point. You know, we have the office space available, it's kind of an in-kind contribution that we offer to them, rental space, because the offices are not being used. But I think long-term, that'd be a good question for them to come before us and talk about it, and I believe they'd be happy to talk about it with you guys.
One note I do want to make too about that office space, and share your problem with better guys. For as long as I can remember, we have, usually we still have some folders, or we used to have our files here.
We do.
It was over the key as well, that's when we had them here before, so this isn't like a, a change, as long as I've known, we've actually brought in the office space for them. And one thing that is good, that they've done for us in the past and we hope they continue to do is, as we've said, we do function with them with our 501(c)(3), right? For grants, they don't charge us an administrative fee, right? So they could do that, but they don't for us utilizing them as our 501(c)(3). But I will say that from the past, I would, I think that long-term goal, that would be great, it is something though that we have done in the past as well.
Yeah. And that's that connection that we've had with them, we, we utilize them for our grants, so when we apply for accommodations, that's through the Community Foundation. So our tourism dollars, and they are also who we go through for the thirty percent accommodations. What's the word I'm looking for?
Yeah, the accommodation tax grants and also for the ones that we do with the state tourism.
Yeah. And that's, that's something I agree, I think we need to better, have a better connection, understanding and a firm grasp of what all, what's going on, especially when money's being exchanged, so.
Yes, because money is running through the city of Hartsville for any reason.
Yeah.
The mayor and all of council need to know who they are, what they do, and what their plans are, because you, you can't take monies and, and just put them over in one corner.
Sure.
It, it robs the other three corners.
Sure.
So, you know, that's why I need to know.
Yep.
Who's who, what's going on, and see how this thing works out.
Right, and that's why you have a list of their full board members and I'll be giving you guys updates as, as I have the meetings.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Long time coming.
All right, real quick, what's up with the old adventure building?
We need to sell it.
Okay. Do you need me by the end of the month?
So the adventure building, and correct me if I'm wrong, they are going to be out as Wednesday, so tomorrow. They need an extra day because they, of course, were caught up in the storms going on in Greenville and whatnot, not Greenville, but Columbia. So we will do a final walkthrough with the CEO tomorrow. We did have the building appraised, and so we are interested in definitely putting it on the market, looking for a commercial space. And then we can work out, whoever buys it can work out for parking situation with the next-door neighbors and whatnot. So we're going to be bringing you guys and putting it up for market and then bringing you guys possible buyers coming forward.
Yeah, we've already got.
Several people have expressed interest in the building, it's a, it's a downtown center. I would advise that we want to go towards a, a business that is going to pay taxes and business license to kind of get away from the nonprofit and the, that section of town, that town needs a little shot, that side needs a shot in the arm.
Yeah.
So, yes, ma'am, Teresa?
So it's listed at three hundred and fifty thousand?
That's the appraisal, we're going to, the appraisal was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So the old city hall was listed at like four hundred and twenty thousand, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
In that ballpark.
Yeah.
And we sold it for ninety thousand.
The council has the option to sell it for whatever price they deem, I would suggest you sell it for the appraisal if you can.
And, and that was, I stated that then, but it was not agreed upon.
Sure.
But we need to understand, when, when you let a property go for that lower price, they, they, the business will not return those tax dollars like that.
Valid point.
This adventure's been renovated, it's not in dire need like the old city hall was. They put a bunch of money in renovations in the old city hall.
I understand that.
Okay.
I know exactly what was done of that.
You just want to be mindful of return on investment when, when we do sell it. Right, I thought they come understanding you correctly.
Yes, if, if that's what the value is, we need to look at that.
Fair enough. Let's move on to the best part, the millage discussion.
Oh, yes, so this is the best part. So millage, do you want to do a quiz first, or do you want to go ahead and explain it?
Just the process.
Okay, fair enough. So I'm going to start and then Karen will let you jump in once time, because she is the CPA.
We practiced a lot yesterday and I feel, I feel like he's come a long way.
I, I've come a long way. So a millage, again, is your taxes, is assessed value for the town, and basically you're looking at one one-thousandth of the assessed value for the entire area, and that is what a mill equals. You then take the assessed value of a property and multiply it by that millage and you get what the taxes for the town, for that property. So it's a little hard to read, you guys do have the worksheets in front of you. From 2023 to 2024, the assessed value for Hartsville went to twenty-seven million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. It did go up from twenty-four thousand, six, six, seven, twenty-four million, six, six, seven, one sixty-three. So if you were to take a true mill, which is, mill is one one-thousandth in French, it'd be twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-four, three thirty-eight. However, for budgetary purposes, we like to look at what the actual collection rate is. And so by looking at what money we got last year from the county, we feel comfortable going forward with a ninety-three percent collection rate, so we multiply that twenty-seven thousand times the ninety-three percent, and we get a true budgetary millage rate for ourselves of about twenty-five thousand dollars. Other, your, your millage rate varies wildly based on your income, the assessed value of the town, for instance, Charleston might have a mill that's worth a million, we have a mill that's worth twenty-five thousand. A town could have a mill that's worth five hundred dollars, for instance, if they have a low population and whatnot. So our mill, for budgetary purposes, is twenty-five thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and that's it, yeah, twenty-five thousand, three, three, uh, seven, and twenty-three cents. So the next thing to explain is the mill bank, millage bank. So every five years we do reassessment, which is what we've been waiting for, and if you do not raise taxes, you can bank those mills you could have spent into a five-year rolling fund, essentially a bank. And so we have twenty-six point two mills saved up because the consumer price index has been so high, inflation's been so high. So we are able to bank twenty-six point two mills. You can see the breakdown there, we have had some or little to no growth, so that does not count against us, that's zero. So you take your CPI and multiply it by that and then you get a figure, and eventually you come down to the twenty-six point two mills of leftover from the residual millage minus the current millage. And our current millage is one thirty-five point nine. That's what you guys approved in our budget coming up this year, and we said we weren't going to raise millage, so that's what we went forward with. So when you do the reassessment, the value, the weight of the mill goes up, that means that the current millage at one thirty-five, in order to maintain that, we have to take from that bank eleven point two mills to then maintain the one thirty-five point nine in our calculations, if that makes sense. Last time when we did the reassessment, we utilized eight mills from that bank to maintain or to get close to maintaining that millage, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and last time, so one thing I'll say is, one way I always look at it is so when we talk about it for the revenues, one mill, if I added one mill today, it would give us an additional twenty-five thousand dollars of revenue, okay? So for each mill you add, that would give you twenty-five thousand dollars, right? That's how you would add the mills on, that's how you would calculate this out.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear on that one.
Yeah, exactly. And so we, because you guys passed a one thirty-five point nine, because the weight of the mills changed, we had to add eleven point two mills to our current value of our mill, because it would have gone down, to get us equal to that one thirty-five point nine. So there's, that would mean no action from council, you're not raising millage, we're not rolling anything back, you're just looking at maintaining the one thirty-five point nine, that means you still have fifteen point, or fourteen, yeah, fourteen point nine mills remaining in your bank.
And the reason why I do have that is it is twofold, right? So what we talked about was our CPI, right, so we had the big jump. When we did this, I believe in 2019 was, was the first time I had the, the pleasure of doing this calculation. When we did that, our goal was to stay at the same millage, we didn't want to have roll back, but our bank, we utilized the entire bank of eight mills and then I decreased it by two mills, because I didn't have anything left.
Yeah.
For that. Because of the CPI, we don't have to do the rollback this time, we're going to be able to stay at the one thirty-five point nine.
And that's common, so cities, I put in that note, and this is what I've done in the past two seasons I've worked for, cities typically do, kind of, if you don't raise taxes every year, which is certainly a strategy, you may, you can maintain that in that bank and wait for reassessment, and then you have the millage in the bank to be able to cover the reassessment. And so that's what we've done here, we do actually have more in the bank because of, again, the inflation we've had. We'll take the lowest in the years millage.
Oldest.
The oldest millage, yeah. And we'll maintain the, the remaining balance of fourteen point nine in that bank. So I did do a little small calculation at the bottom, basically explain what your, how you get to what your tax bill is. So if you had a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, you multiply that by four percent, which is your assessment value, if you're doing a single family and it's your primary dwelling, it's six percent if you have commercial, things like, if you go that six percent, think ten percent for industrial, but four percent, which equals to six thousand dollar assessed value, so that hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, according to tax purposes, is worth four thousand or six thousand dollars. You take that six thousand divided by a thousand, which is six, multiply that by the millage, one thirty-five point nine, and you have a tax bill for the year of that house at eight hundred and fifteen dollars and forty cents, that's what's done to the city. And that's our millage.
Correct, and that's what I was about to say, so in the past, this is for us here, I believe we did lower taxes, but people maybe didn't feel it, and that is because when you look at your tax bill, we're not the only ones that are going to be paying that tax, right?
Was it a third of the bill? We are roughly, no, if you look at your tax bill, we're probably twenty percent.
Fifty-ish.
Your school, your school district, not to beat up on them, is about sixty percent, then your county is going to be the twenty, and if you're in a city, the other twenty will be the city. And we're typically lower than the county in this thing, but definitely the school district. And you see, school districts, for example, maybe not necessarily Darlington County, but probably, when they have millage available based on their CPI and their growth, they take that mill and they increase.
You know what I'm going to ask?
Yes, sir.
CPI, what is that?
Consumer Price, Consumer Price Index. We use that, that number comes up a lot, inflation.
Yeah.
That number's come up quite a bit lately as we've been using it to calculate our COLA every year, our cost of living adjustment. And you can see, I mean, one year was eight, eight percent, which is huge.
Based on your population growth percentage.
And our percentage growth has been relatively flat. And flat, and, and then in the census, of course, which we don't agree with, it was negative. Anything negative you don't have to use in the calculation, it zeros out.
Thank goodness, you can do that. But the other thing too is some of y'all might be qualified for the homestead extension, right? So you will have credits that will come across that, and you also have your lost tax credit factor, so.
I'm trying to say.
I mean, I wasn't.
She turned to Bob when she said that, on the record show.
I don't know your age, Bob, but make sure you do apply for that. I told my family about that a few years ago and they were able to go back and get three years' worth of it.
It's a big difference, too.
It does. It, it takes off a certain percentage from the very beginning.
I wanted to, the, you're next. To your question, the, the increase in the assessed value from the county is partially accountable for by inflation. Some of that's real growth. But a significant portion of it, I don't, I won't throw the number out, but a significant portion of that is inflation, and hopefully we won't have that same issue going forward, as inflation's already started to come down, but Councilwoman Mack, do you have?
Yes. Um, so looking at our tax millage and looking at the property tax va, tax values of properties, there are not many homes other than the habitat homes and some of the more affluent homes that are worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Sure, and I, you know, I ran a calculation at, you know, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, and that's just to give you an example of what it is.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next thing is, what did we catalog as dilapidated and condensed?
So we got the numbers, so that assessed value came from the county.
Right.
So I'm not sure what they went into and how they calculated, and I know we've had several concerns about how those numbers are being done, so. You know, we are one of only two cities that has to calculate this number for the county. And that's interesting across the state, considering there's two hundred and seventy-three cities in South Carolina, and we're only one of two that does this for Darlington County. No harm in saying it out loud. So I'm not sure exactly what goes into their calculations, but we are completely dependent on that twenty-seven million that we got for, that the number. I have no idea exactly how they derived from that number.
So.
Other than it's real in property values, that we're taking what they give us, and that's, they have to be, they have to stand by that number.
You said we, the city of Hartsville cataloged?
Yes.
So I can blame the city of Hartsville for?
No, sir, you can blame Darlington County. Just kidding. Uh, no, we, the city of Hartsville, we just are running the numbers for them. That's all. Yeah.
They usually provide you what your rollback would look like, but unfortunately, it's good. It's a good lesson every year, so I've worked closely with our attorney on it to make sure that I'm doing this correctly. So that's when I found out about, there's only one other county he's aware of in the state that doesn't do it for you, and we're one of the two, so that's pretty cool. It's a good learning lesson.
We can verify our numbers, though. That makes me feel better about it.
And we do. We tie out. So the numbers that they brought me for revenues, I had Terry tie that out to make sure that I felt comfortable with it.
Yeah.
And the ninety-three percent collection, is that a historical average, or?
Yeah, it fluctuates per year.
So what we do is we calculate what's levied, how much in tax bills we've levied, right, and then what are received.
We don't have any control over collection, though, do we?
No.
Yeah, okay.
We do not, and we actually, we do pay the county for that service, because they do the collection, so we pay them each year.
Any, any other questions from council?
Yes. Karen, you said that a homestead property is able to go back three years and collect?
That's the statute of limitations, yes.
For homestead?
Yes.
Or for a six percent?
No, it's for a homestead, a homestead exemption.
I'm not sure how far back, if you have a six percent switch that needs to be switched back to a four, I don't know if it's three years as well.
I think it might be three.
I have had wonderful experience of forgetting to change over my four percent to six percent, so it's typically three years of statute.
So it's three years for on the occupied property that was paid at six percent?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
But that's not homestead exempt?
No, those are two different things, but what I was saying though is, if you do realize you qualify for the homestead, they did allow, I went and did it with my father-in-law, and they let him go back and collect the two years where he had overpaid, because he had actually already qualified for the homestead exemption.
Homestead is on top of the four percent.
We'll, we'll be checking into that.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and I'll be glad to try to help you with that as well.
Councilman Braddock, you got a?
Is there a required amount yet to keep in the bank?
No, not as far as, no, no.
No, if we want to do the full amount, we could do this year, is you could increase the taxes to a hundred and fifty mills if y'all wanted.
We could go to one fifty point seven if you so choose.
Think y'all fine. So if you didn't.
But we held truths, city, we talked about it in the budget process. We knew reassessment was coming up. We talked about increasing mills. We didn't have to do increased millage to budget the bow, balance the budget, and so that's why we maintained the one thirty-five point nine.
But it is, what will roll over, the last year would roll off, so it's a rolling five years, and then we'll have the bank as well.
So the bank could go up again. No, the va, the value of the mill is increased, so your taxes will go up based on the value of the mill.
That's, that's the six, what that question?
Yeah, the, the tax rate stays the same, but the dollar value's going to go up due to the assessment, yeah.
And we calculate based on these different numbers, and the difference between potentially last year and this year for like a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house was a hundred dollar increase for the year for the person, so about twelve dollars a month increase, on average, if you look at.
Which is interesting, so what you're doing is really.
Sixty-seven dollars for a hundred thousand dollar house, so that's how much it would increase. Anything else?
All right. Appreciate that. I know there's been a lot of work that went into it. We'll skip item F. Brian Braddock was going to talk to us about the, the old school on Washington Street, but he had another conflict, so he's going to come either the next meeting or at least one upcoming. So that brings us to the tiny house presentation.
Scott, would you like me to introduce, or you want me to, you would like to take over? You go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Erica Coe. And I'm here to represent Jared Meyer, twenty-nine eleven housing. We are a nonprofit that just started three months ago in Hartsville, South Carolina. We are interested in asking the city of Hartsville to donate, to donate Lincoln Village to our 501(c)(3) so that we can do a tiny house village for seniors. We also want to do tiny house village for foster kids that aging out and for veterans. Our tiny house villages will consist and go by the guidelines that the state has set for each individual group. The reason why that we are interested in doing this is because we, in our district twenty-nine of Darlington County, our seniors have a two-year waiting list for housing, for active local income housing. Our foster kids are aging out at the age of eighteen, and they are aging out in the range of seven to ten a year, and.
That's in the county? Is that the county statistic? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And then our veterans in Darlington County, out of three hundred and forty veterans that we have in Darlington County, thirty-four are homeless. So that's the statistics right now in Darlington County as we speak. The reason why this is important to me is because I grew up on Rice Street, so from my front door, I can, I used to keep going, I could do a feedback to give. So it's important that we put something back into our community that is going to bring income, that's going to let our dollars stay within our community as well. The reason why I want to do a tiny house village for the seniors is because I think it's important that we pour back into our elders first, and also because they have the greater need, they have the longer waiting list than the foster kids, and they have the one, longer waiting list than the veterans as well. It's important as well also because we can bring so many other things in that, into the community for the seniors. Our proposal is for the property is to put a community center there for our seniors that don't have the opportunity to go to the TV towns, buildings, or to the IMCA. We would like it. We are trying to partner with Hairshop as well, so we can get the mobile units bought to the tiny house village once we get established, so they can see attorneys, or get mammograms done, prostate exam done, get the dental unit out there so they get their teeth examined. We also want to build on that property inside the community center, have a way their lo, local nutrition or barber can come out and style their hair and keep their hair cut. They can do bridge, they can play bingo, they can have concerts for the elderly there as well, and someone that I helped take care of in that group here and dear to my heart was Miss Phoebe Wiggins, and she used to love to have gardens. So we would like to put a garden out there in the city of, um, tiny village in honor of Miss Phoebe Wiggins as well. We have also been communicating with Barley Foundation for funding. I've also communicated with several other companies within Hartsville as well for funding. We also spoke with the South Carolina Department of Revenue for each tiny house that we build within the village. They will give us an application that we will be filling out, and then to make it tax exempt. So whoever's staying in the house doesn't have to pay proper tax on it, because it'll be owned by the 501(c). The city of Hartsville still own the land, which is a 501(c), so they'll make it tax exempt, which makes it cheaper for the people to live out there. We, I've also spoken with Charles Burley from the South Carolina Housing Authority, and he is going to give us a voucher program for the seniors, so they only have to pay what is based off that income as well. So I also have included in the package the picture of the tiny house, how it looks, the square footage of it, how it looks from looking inside, and I've also put the dimensions of the tiny house in it as well, the size. And so then you have the map of Lincoln Village, and then you have what we would like to put out there as well. And we have, I left a message with PDRTA about the bus stop, but they have not contacted me back yet, but we would like to put a bus stop there, so if they want to get to the Walmart, because right now the PDRTA stop is over by Heinz Streamer Hall. That's a great walk, but if we can get them where they can come to the corner of Marion and Eighth Street, where they can just walk to the top of the road, we are even thinking about building a shuttle stop, so if it's raining, they can sit, catch the bus, or even if they need to pick up for the shoppers, they can get picked up.
I, I feel sure that they would be willing to, you know, work with you on that. They've, they've been a good partner for us. It certainly makes sense. Are you finished?
Yes. Do y'all have any questions?
Any questions from council?
How about you next, Erica?
Right now, because of the R-two zoning, the minimal square footage of the lot has to be seventy-five hundred square feet, so if we go by the R-two zoning, we can put twenty-one tiny houses out there, because we have to do the seventy-five hundred square feet per lot that we do individual housing, and that's what we have in the future, the individual housing.
Cool.
Erica?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mack.
I wanted to ask the question about the foster children aging out. And I noticed that you had in your presentation about the behavioral health services that they would be provided with. I, I, I just have some.
The reason for the behavioral health assessments that they would need to do monthly is because according to grant money issued by the state and the federal government, that's a part of the program for them to receive any type of funding from the government. So they require financial literacy, they require behavioral health, which I think will be important for people to go through, because people, sometimes they bond over trauma, and sometimes, how grandma used to say, one bad apple can spoil a whole bunch. So, but if we meet them while they're going through their trauma, because we don't know, well, I know, I don't know how it feels not to have someone have adopted me, or have a loving mother and a loving father, because I have both. So I don't know what they're going through, so, and need, if you haven't experienced that, and then you have a group of people that have never been adopted, that what aged out means at the age of eighteen, no one has ever adopted them. You don't know how to face them, how they hold on to it, how will it affect them going forward? So that's important, so the behavioral health.
That's your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from council? Well, thank you so much. It's super cool. I love that it's homegrown. That's probably my favorite part of the project. Obviously, we saw a presentation for a, a different vision for that property earlier, and they're both awesome. So I'm really looking forward, looking forward to seeing where this goes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, too. Well, that's it. Uh, Mr. Manager, Madam Assistant Manager?
Yes, today we have the bids coming in for the capital lease, and you remember how we were waiting to see what the feds would be like on the eighteenth, and it did work in our favor. We just got our first bid that came in, and it was like three point six eight percent interest. So it is working out well, which is what we were hoping for. The bids will be coming in, and we'll be finishing up with that next week, so y'all will see that second read on that coming up.
Great. Anything else for the good of the club?
Mayor, we rescheduled the national lot out.
Tonight?
It's tonight. Tonight, got it, sir.
We got a dunk, we got a dunk booth. You wanted to get in it, didn't you? That is why you were asking.
Aren't you glad you asked?
Six P.M. Six P.M.
I'm the first pitcher up.
You're out.
I'm the first pitcher up.
It is a free event, so please come. That's going to be a break.
Hopefully, I'll see a bunch of you there.
Yeah, Bob will be in the tank from six to nine. So if you just want to throw them in, that'd be fine.
Thank you for, thank you for reminding us.
In the tank.
We should have mentioned that, so thank you.
Yeah, we're hearing no objection. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much.